Hello, ah, hi everybody.
Hi.
My name is Paula Kenev. I'm the Director of Development and Marketing here at Auburn Public Theater. I feel very fancy sitting down here to do the curtain speech right now, but I would just like to thank our season sponsors, The Holiday Inn, Mesa Grande, the New York State Council on the Arts, The Citizen, WRVO Public Radio, and Cowley Associates. So thanks to all of them, we're able to do our fabulous programming here, and I hope that you all enjoy what will be a very insightful and fun and educational podcast with your host Katie McIntyre. I'll let her take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you. So welcome to the first live episode of The Loving Cup Elevate Your Gratitude. So this is a podcast that I usually record in the studio of Finger Lakes One in Seneca Falls. So special thanks to Jim Sinicropi, who's the President of Finger Lakes One, who's here to film this so we can post it later on. And I wanted to start by inviting everyone in the audience to take a minute and think about the city of Auburn and what kind of gratitude we could express to all of the people who have put energy and effort to get us to where we are today. So there's lots, lots of people who have helped that to happen, so just give you a minute to think about that. So we're gonna jump in. Usually my guests are not on camera yet, but you can see them all, you know who they are. So I'm excited to welcome three of our city councilors, Terry Cuddy, Dia Carvahal, and Debbie McCormick. And I'm gonna turn it over to Terry to introduce us to Dia, and then we'll go down the line and learn a little bit more about you.
Great, Katie, thank you. So I'm here with my colleague Dia Carvahal. She is a fellow city councillor, and she is also a professor at QD Community College in the Fulton Campus, if I'm correct.
Wow.
I'm sorry, okay. She's a professor at CCC, and she is married to Lee Ballard, and her son Mathias goes to SU. It's his first year, freshman year, so...
Absolutely. Wow, I didn't know you knew that much about me too.
I do know. Well, actually, we were neighbors on...
Yes, we were, I'm teasing.
Yes, we were neighbors.
Absolutely. So I'm not going to introduce you, but rather I'm going to introduce Debbie McCormick, who is part of the city council with me. She is my colleague. I'm happy to say that the Auburn City Council is 40% women, and we are, we are here, and that's higher than other governing bodies. So I'm happy to serve with Debbie. Debbie works at Wells College as well as being a city councillor. She's married to Mike, and her daughter is Abigail.
You're so good to know that. I'm in big trouble.
You didn't know. That I didn't know, right?
Thank you. Thank you. That was really nice. I have the privilege of introducing Terry Cuddy, and I'd better get it right because certain people are here right now. Terry Cuddy, I've known him for a long time, and if I listed all the roles, I've known him under hats that he's worn, I would be out of town. But right now, he is an awesome city councillor, who I am thrilled is a city councillor. It's great working with him on that side of the world. And he's also a teacher at Bosie's, which I think is great for the kids at Bosie's. He teaches art, graphic arts, and new media. And he's just a great, great teacher, musician, and, oh, and he's married to the great Beth Beer Cuddy. And she's here tonight, and so is her beautiful handsome son, John. So...
Perfect, perfect. So I'm gonna ask you a bunch of questions about gratitude, and you will all get a chance to answer them. There's no order, so if one of you is dying to answer first, just jump on in. So we're gonna start with, if you can share something that you're most grateful for in the past year.
Don't jump right in.
Well, for me, I'm grateful for my son's successes. So as Terry said, my son's a freshman at Syracuse University. He graduated from high school, so it's been a really wonderful thing to watch this transition in his life, although bittersweet, he's leaving his mother. But I'm happy and grateful that we've been able to help him get there, and this transition has been a good one for him. So this has just happened in this last year. So if I were to say over this past year, that has been our focus, and we're glad that it's been successful in that.
That's great.
So I speak for his father as well, I'm sure.
Well, I cheated, because while she answered, I thought of an answer.
That's allowed.
But I have lots of things to be grateful for in the past year, but as it relates to the city, I think one of the many is the Equal Rights Heritage Center. Last year at this time, there was a parking lot across the street, and now we've got this beautiful center, and it's busy, it's successful, it's bringing people together. And I didn't have, I hardly had anything to do with it, getting it together, but we're grateful for the people behind the scenes that made it happen within that short period of time. And we're blessed with people that are working there, that are just beautiful. They're doing a great job, they're working hard, and we've had two really big, successful events there. And daily, they have tours through it. It's gonna, it's, I'm grateful that it's there. It's gonna change Auburn, I think.
So were our answers supposed to be not personal, but rather about...
They can be whatever, whatever comes to your heart. There's no rules.
Well, Dia covered, you know, personal, you know, family. Debbie covered, you know, professional counsel. I, you know, for me, one of the things I'm very grateful for was this, my wife and I are in a band, and we found the time to produce a record, and that I'm really grateful for, we were able to do that, to spend time to make that. So that's, that's one thing this past year I'm very grateful for.
And what's the name of your band?
The band is called The Cast of Thousands.
I mean, I knew the answer to that, but it was more for everyone else.
Yeah, I mean, we're all very busy being, you know, on city council, but, you know, we, you know, we have lives outside of that, you know, that profession, and, you know, and I think that that informs our decisions, that there's, you know, it's a very, this community allows us to really kind of do what we want to do, and to, you know, there's a lot of nurturing aspects of this community, and this place in particular, Auburn Public Theater, has allowed that to foster so much in this city.
Definitely. Did you all grow up here?
Yes.
I did.
I moved here when I was five, so I was, so...
We'll let you say you grew up here.
Well, yeah, yeah. I guess, I guess five.
He gets a pass, yeah.
But I did, but I think, thinking of the theme of your show, I did move away for a bit. My husband was in the Navy, and I thought, I'm gonna get out of Auburn. I can't wait to get into the real world, you know. I was back in Auburn before, it's, it's, living here is, I think you do have to maybe leave to realize how, how good we have it here. And I was glad I had a great city to come back to, and that was before we had all the things happening. It was right after, it was like downtown kind of fizzled out, and things were going, and I moved back, and then everything got better.
Amazing. I'm not from here. I think we like to stay at our house, that Auburn's our chosen home, but we've been here since 2005.
But that's the other thing, you're not the, I don't know if this is a question, but I have met so many people, young people, young family people, that have chose to live in Auburn. It's wonderful. It is really something to be grateful for.
That's good. So what about something you're grateful for for your whole life? Is there something that comes to the top?
I'll take this one. I'm grateful for my wife, Beth, and my son, John, and, you know, they have been, you know, so important to my, they've just been so important to me. The, plus, growing up, I'm very grateful in my life for my parents and what they taught me, and helped me be, helped me become who I am today. And so I hope to, you know, live up to those, you know, what they taught me.
That's great.
Certainly family, parents, and husband, and child, and, but, but too, I have siblings that I'm very close to, and they live here in town as well. So I'm grateful that I have them still here. So many, so many families that were in Auburn, some of the siblings have moved on and moved away, and they, you grow apart, and my sisters are here for support, for friendship, for arguments, when you need to have them. And so that, over my whole life, they have been, they, we've grown together, and we've been support for each other. So, so in family, definitely, but, but it's specifically the closeness of my sisters in proximity, as well as, as friends.
It's a tough one, because there's a lot to be grateful for over your whole lifetime. And it's so, I do am grateful, needless to say, for my family, but in particular, my husband. He's my best friend, and I don't think, I really don't think, he's just so patient, that makes me sound bad, but, so patient, and he sticks by me, and he supports me, and I wouldn't be doing the things that I'm doing if, if he didn't push me on to do it. So I really am grateful for that, because I get to do these things, and I don't think I have the, maybe I would, but I don't want to find out. He's, he's really been like my best friend, so I'm really grateful for that, because I know it's precious.
Beautiful. How about, what are you grateful for in each other?
Well, I think that we all work together very well, right? I don't think that we necessarily agree on everything.
That's a good thing.
But we discuss things in a civil manner. We are respectful of each other. We're respectful of each other's ideas and creativity. We're respectful of, of ideas that we wouldn't necessarily have. And even, even those opinions that are different, I think that we come out of it on the other side, still respecting each other and listening to each other. And I think that that's really, really important, and it's certainly unique in governance situations.
Sure, it is. It is. I think, because what I thought about these beforehand, I have a list for both of Terry and Dia, but I won't go through the whole list. But I have learned a lot. Dia, I did have your honesty and your courage. You've, you've been honest to a point where people are like, oh my God. And, but it was a good thing to be that honest. It's a good thing. And Terry, the first thing that comes to mind is passion. I think, and grateful, I'm personally grateful, but I'm grateful for the whole community, because Terry's doing it, he is passionate, whether it's playing the guitar or voting on a resolution at a city council meeting. So I think all the things that, and Mayor Quill and Jimmy Giantino as well, I learned a lot from working with all of those people.
Debbie has a great sense of humor.
I'm sorry.
And she's a little sarcastic.
I've been trying to work on it, but I just can't. It's nervous stuff, so you know I'm nervous pretty much a lot, so...
I've, I've known Debbie and Dia for, each of them for 20, 20 years easily, and I've known them in different capacities. I consider them both friends, even prior to being on city councillor, prior to being on city council. They, working with them on council, they bring their strengths, as was mentioned prior, you know. With Dia, she really finds, she, she really is able to pinpoint great questions and ask great questions for several issues. Debbie is, what she said about Dia, I would say about Debbie. She, she's really, she's very strong, you know, in what she believes in, and, and that's one of the things that I've always respected about Debbie, is that she's, she's, she's very tough, and knows, and I've, I've learned a lot from Debbie, and she, you know, so she's, she's, again, I think we complement each other. I tend to talk too much, which I'm doing right now, but, but we complement each other, and I, again, I'm glad you mentioned Mayor and Jimmy. We bring different, different aspects of the community into those council chambers, and there's, there's no, you know, there's no real, it's, it's, I think it's the most organic committee, if we're gonna call it, but it's the most organic group of people I've, I've worked with. So, and I've been on lots of boards and commissions and committees, and, you know, I'm grateful to work with such great colleagues.
I think that relationships matter a lot, you know, and we all have worked hard at keeping the relationships between each other strong, and, and to get to know, I really didn't know the mayor and Debbie as well as I knew Jimmy and Terry when I, when I came on the council, but those relationships are very important. As, as Terry said, we go back a long way.
Yeah.
We go back to our spirits days, hanging out and listening to music.
Oh, spirits, yeah.
Oh, spirits, and drinking some beers, and we also go back to a grassroots organization called, what was it called?
Kiuga County for the Future.
Kiuga County for the Future, and we were in our twenties.
Just rolls off the tongue.
And Chuck Mason was, was also involved, and we started petitioning, what did we do? We, they were, the Smith Corona...
DEC said it was...
Was polluting the inlet to the Owassee Lake.
Yeah, they put a proposal together. The DEC allowed the, permitted the Old Smith Corona plant to discharge treated wastewater. So we kind of...
So I was in my twenties, sharing an apartment with my sister, and I came home, and there was a meeting going on in the living room. And it was Terry, and it was some friends, and Chuck, and they were talking about, we've gotta do something. And so I got involved, because you were in my living room, and, and it seemed like the right thing to do, but we did, we took some action, and, and we did get...
Yeah, there was...
They did stop, and, and the Smith Corona plant came back, and they, they did clean up the pollution.
The DEC, yes.
Or the DEC made them.
Yeah, the DEC basically pulled the permit.
Took action.
So they didn't, they went back.
But you had to beat the drum to get it done.
Yeah, we, we interviewed several, we interviewed the Assemblyman at the time, and the State Senator at the time that represented, we got basically all the players that made, that had an effect, the DEC, to, to go on the record saying that they're not in support of, of this, this DEC decision, and that political pressure reversed, eventually reversed it. So I remember going, I was working at Maggie's Pizza Pasta when the, there was a big to-do up at the Emerson Park, and somebody called me like, hey, there's, they have all the, you know, legislature, people from the area are going there to make the announcement. So I'm like, I got mayonnaise all over me, I was like, I got, so I showed up, I kind of was in the back, I didn't like, I didn't, I just looked around, I saw that, you know, it was nice celebrations, nice couple speeches, and I just kind of looked around, I'm like, you know what, like, what happened in that living room about people getting together, very humble, you know, and none of us in that living room were there collecting the accolades, but I realized that, you know, there is, there is power in a group of people coming together and asking for the right thing to be done. So I'm grateful for, for that, that happened, being able to happen in Auburn.
But we, we also learned a lot from that.
Yes.
And then there were a couple of political campaigns that we worked on back in those days as well.
Yeah.
And that sort of thing, and one thing led to another. But anyway, that's that longstanding relationship.
Yeah.
You know, with Chuck and with, with Terry, and Jimmy I knew because our sons were friends, and we're on the swim team together.
Awesome. And you're still working with the DEC and Water, you know?
We are, yep, yep.
That's a long relationship, too.
Yes, it is.
So what about, what are you most grateful for in your careers?
Oh, boy.
Which one?
Whatever one you pick. Whichever, whichever one you...
Well, I would just say opportunity. It's the first thing that comes to mind for a lot of different reasons. As a female, I've got opportunities that my grandmother didn't have, my mother didn't have, and the older I get, the more I am grateful, because I see it clearer now than I did before. And, but other opportunities through the things I, I do, like, it's, that's really a corny saying, but when one door shuts, another door opens, I swear by it, it does happen. At the time, I wasn't sure, but I can look back now and say, everything happens for the right reason and for a reason, and opportunity, I think, is my, my most favorite thing.
Awesome. How about for one of you?
So, so I'm a woman in a STEM field of study. I teach mathematics, and I was in that field before others. There were fewer women in the 1970s and 80s when I was coming up through school. So I'm grateful for that in my career, because, because my study of mathematics has always led to be able, be able to work. I've been able to always find a job. But it also, teaching at the community college, I get to meet a lot of young people, and, and that just really kind of keeps me motivated and energized, that, you know, so I'm grateful for my STEM career, I'm grateful that I can be around young people, and I'm grateful for the continued opportunity that my education continues to bring me. So that's that side of it. But then there's the political side, because there is kind of that kind of career thread for all of us. We have our day job, and then we have our political career. So my day job allows me freedom to, to be able to do, do this, to be a public servant on the oft side time.
That's great.
And I'm grateful for being a Bosie's teacher. I wanted to be an art teacher, printmaking, video art in, in college, and when I came back, I was an adjunct at places like UB, University of Buffalo, and Hamilton, and I taught at CCC as an adjunct, and my wife Beth, as an adjunct, she, she was concerned about my, my being able to help support our family, and so she's like, you know, they're looking for somebody at Bosie's. So I, you know, I was like, well, she really pushed me towards going for the interview, so I went, and, you know, in the interview, I asked, you know, I comment this from, from artistic perspective, I know it's a career and technical program, and, and they believed in me. And this is my 14th year, and I love teaching high school. I love teaching 11th and 12th graders. And really, what I've been able to do, what I'm grateful for is all the things that I would have been teaching the, the kids at the college level, I'm teaching, introducing 11th and 12th graders to the things that I was learning in college, the kinds of artists that inspired me, the kinds of films that inspired me, and, you know, and so I'm really glad, grateful that my wife Beth encouraged me to get a job, so...
That's great. Super. That's really good. So how about, if we think about the community, what are you most grateful for about the community?
Well, coming, just jumping in, coming off a weekend where there was, it seemed like, maybe I'm just more aware of it, a lot of fundraisers for people that aren't, that need, need the help and the support for one reason or another. I think, I don't, I, I think we come together and rally for people, and, and most of the community isn't, I would say, on the wealthy, I've got spare change to throw around, but we always come through for someone, in a good way. I think that's a really unique thing, and people volunteer and chip in and bake and get gift baskets, and it's, it's, it's all over town. This weekend, there was something on every corner, and the families and individuals that benefited from them are ever so grateful, and I'm sure they had done it before for another person. So I think it's unique, maybe I'm wrong, but...
No, it is. So that was one, one of the first things I did when I came to Auburn, was a coworker invited me to a benefit at the Falcons, and I'd never seen anything like that. And I've lived all over the Northeast. It's, it's definitely unique to, to this community. It's a beautiful thing.
It is, yeah.
How about for you guys?
I was, I, I was gonna say the same thing, is that Auburn does, is very caring, does come out to support those in need, and so many, and so many levels. And so another thing I'm grateful for in the community is, you know, the resilience, which relates to that, but also, like, we're, I consider Auburn a very kind of, when I say resilient, it, it goes through tough times, and it works through those times, and it rebounds. And I think that, that has a lot to do with what, you know, what has, what does happen is, and not only did Debbie leave and come back, I left and come, came back. And we find value in here, once we've left, and we see what's, what's great about this community, and we bring our outside experience to, to help, help that. And there's people like you that, that aren't from Auburn, and you come in and you bring your outside experience to make this community. You realize what's great in it, but you also, you know, add to it with all the great stuff that you've done, not only for Auburn, but Seneca Falls and the organization that you've done. So I'm grateful for the resilience of the people of Auburn, and the fact that it can be a welcoming place for, for, for people like you. And I know that, that, you know, Auburn has had its ups and downs, and, you know, I hate to say it, it's gonna have its ups and downs, it's gonna have more ups and downs, but I just like the character of the city. It is, it is a, for lack of a better term, it's like, it's a tough city, but it, it has heart.
That's a good way to put it.
You know...
Yeah, I think heart and a little grit.
Heart and grit, yeah, yeah.
So, so we're on an up. And we've been on an up. Yeah, grit. I think that, I think that perseverance over time is very important, that we're a strong community, and it's important to us to stay together in good times and bad, whether they're individual good times or, or collective good times. And so right now, we are sharing a collective good time in the resurgence of, of downtown Auburn, and with some economic development money coming into, into downtown Auburn. We're feeling good about ourselves again. There's a time...
And the West End.
And the West End, absolutely. And so there, there was a time as a community that we didn't, didn't feel so good about ourselves, that when I graduated from high school, the first thing that my peers wanted to do was to move to Florida and get a job there, and the only, only idea of success for them was to leave town, and, and that was, that was the big goal. And for those of us who stayed and continued to build a community that we knew and that we loved, you know, during those down times, I think that, I think, speaking about gratitude, I'm glad that we're on, on an upswing. So, but that community feel, you know, the, the bad thing about Auburn is you can go to Wegmans and everybody knows you. But the good thing about Auburn is that you can go to Wegmans and everybody knows you, you know, so, so, yeah, if you're running for office and you go to Wegmans, everybody kind of...
Really don't have to do anything else.
So you don't have to go door to door. You don't have to do anything else, but you're talking to a lot of people. So, yeah, it, it, the closeness of Auburn and, and knowing everyone and caring about everyone, we still have that, that, that tight feel here.
So did you think about gratitude much before today? Is that something that you think about in your life?
I, you know, I, I should think...
There's no right answer.
Yeah, I know.
Just whatever your answer is. No pressure.
No, this really, you know, not that I'm, I'm not grateful, but, but being part of the show and, and really made me take inventory of what I am grateful for. And I believe I am, in, in, in many ways, you know, I show that, but I tend, I admit I can be, I can kind of isolate myself or get caught up... I tend, I, I admit I can be, I can kind of isolate myself or get caught up in, you know, myself phone or getting, you know, the day to day. But this was, this is, was good to really con- to take inventory of what, count my blessings.
Good.
So I think that Terry just said it, you know, um, our, our parents always said, count your blessings. So it's always a part of a good life to do that or to, to give that advice. Um, so gratitude is, is how we're looking at it today. And so, so yes, you know, counting your blessings and thinking about the things that are good in your life is, is important. Um, I have thought about it because I'm an Oprah fan. And Oprah did a lot of, a lot of, um, TV shows about, um, finding happiness and the psychology of happiness. And, um, there, there's a fellow, I guess, at Carnegie Mellon, if I remember correctly, who, um, who, who said, you know, some of the things that you can do to be happy is to every day remind yourselves of the things that you're grateful for.
Yes.
And so, um, so that has helped me in trying to, once in a while, when I remember to do it, or when I'm having a tough time, to, to do that. So yes, I have thought about it before.
Okay, good.
I have as well. I think, I wasn't Oprah, but for some reason, there's, um, books or whatever, if you're, if you are trying to be happy and you're not feeling too happy, it is, it is everywhere you go is think about what you're grateful for. So every morning, you know, there's different ways to do it. I don't formally do it. I did for this. I said, oh my God, I'll probably forget everything. Um, but I, I am, when things are tough or rough and I just don't want to get out of bed, I have, you really, there's so much to be grateful for. You just can't let the dark clouds sit there too long. And I, I think, in a, on a bad day, I can find it. And on a good day, it's everywhere. So I think everybody should try to look for the best, look for something to be grateful for, especially if you're feeling like you don't want to leave the house. That would be good.
So sometimes I ask my guests if they have a gratitude practice, but I'm not going to ask you that. But, um, it is something to think about if you want to add gratitude into your life. There's things you can do and you could just Google it. And there's lots of ideas. We, you, we do a gratitude jar at our house. So we, it's a family gratitude, um, practice. And we, um, keep all of the jars and we-
How nice.
-reread them, uh, at the end of the year. So it's, it's-
That's a great idea.
A fun thing to do. Um, so I wanted to ask you if there was something that you're grateful for, an experience that you all have had together, that's just something that you'll never forget?
As a council?
I, I think the Equal Rights Heritage Center in Auburn and the DRI that's happening right now. I think that, that, that's brought us great joy together.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, along with, you know, the council didn't do that, you know, by itself.
No.
Certainly, certainly all of, of the city, city, um, staff and, and, and many others contributed. But that was, that, that brought me great joy.
Yeah. To get, to be able to get out of the way, to allow it to happen, to let the people that know how to and what to. And it, it wasn't like a smooth sail right through. So I think, I, I feel fortunate that we were in our seats when we were. Um, I just think that's such a, it's going to be such a change, a positive influence type of a change for the city, that I think as a group, I'll never forget these, um, at least this last year for sure. It, because it was a challenge in a lot of ways. But I, I don't know what it would have been like if we were, um, didn't get along, I, you know, or just were immature about it all. But I think we wanted what's best for Auburn and, um, we tried to bring it together. So I, I think that's what I, as a group.
I mean, one, one thing, it's, it's certainly, it's very different. Um, we, one thing that we did this year together is we went, did, did this, the mayor wanted to do this neighborhood walk. So we did that. And that was, I mean, I don't know if I would have done exactly the same way.
So was all of you together with the mayor?
All was together with, and the police, police officers.
And the police department.
We had paired him with a police officer.
Yes. And we knocked on doors and we asked like, you know, how could the city serve you, you know? And it was more kind of like, you know, just, you know, the, the things, you know, issues that you want us to work on and, you know, and, and, and the, and it was, I mean, hopefully it wasn't the police officer that, you know, but they, for most part, they were happy with-
Happy to see the police officer.
The police there. They're happy with, you know, some, with, you know, what was happening. And they knew, you know, they knew the mayor, they knew, you know, and it was, that was like really kind of going out. And plus, we weren't like, we go, we go to the door when we're running for office. Well, we weren't running for office. And it was kind of like, again, it was just kind of set, this, like asking what we could do. This is the mayor's idea. And it was, it was-
It was good.
It was good. I mean, it was like, there were some things that could have gone wrong, but, 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 um-
It was a hot, it was the hottest month of the year.
Yeah, it was a hot day in the summer. But it was a unique experience, um, that I won't, won't forget.
Yeah, I know.
Um, and we were going to do it again, but then-
The weather.
The weather, yeah.
It was the weather and then we just didn't get back to it. It, it didn't try to get everybody together as you know.
Yeah, it was, it was-
Yeah, you, you're a tough group to schedule.
Yes, we are.
Busy people.
We also traveled to Albany together.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, those have been, those have been, um, good times.
Yes, they have.
To advocate for-
A road trip.
Yeah, well, uh, for NICOM.
For NICOM and to meet with our state representatives, you know, so that's, that's important.
To meet people in other communities. It is good.
That's great. So before we wrap up, I wanted to see if there's anything else that's burning on your mind that you want to share?
In the gratitude, under gratitude?
Yes, yes. Let's keep it to gratitude.
Well, I mean, one thing-
See sarcasm.
I want to say thank you for having us and to be, being so, um, you know, understanding and patient while we figured out our schedules.
So we started scheduling this in August.
Yes.
It's March.
So we think-
No, five of us aren't, I'm sorry to interrupt, but there's supposed to be four or five of us. So we just said, Kate, which you can get Katie.
That works.
But we're thankful, we're glad, I'm glad that you had, had us here. And, um, you know, again, it, having us think about this, because it wasn't part of, it isn't part of, um, my practice, but, you know, it's, it's, I think, you know, Beth and John and myself might talk about being more grateful in our, with, with what we have. So I think it's a good thing. So thank you for having us.
Of course. Anything else? Further view?
I think Terry said it. Thank you. Um, it's, it's not something that necess- we necessarily would have talked about. We get to know each other better though, through these, these types of conversations, which does help us in our relationship building and when we're, we're making decisions for the city of Auburn. So, so, so taking back, uh, step back and not talking about water and sidewalks and roads, um, and just talking about things that we're grateful for, um, is important in our relationship building. So thank you for bringing us together to do that.
And we don't get a lot of time. We come in just a council meeting and that's what we do. And when it's time to go home, we're running out the door. At least I am.
Yeah, the agenda's pretty set. So there's not a lot of time for-
There, there isn't a lot of time. And because you're trying to make time for everything you're responsible for. But this is, is surprise, uh, unexpected. It, this has been a really good thing, I think. It's been, I was like, what? A swan?
So this is the fortieth episode tonight. And, um, I've had guests ranging in age from seven to ninety-four. And everyone has said it's been a really great experience. So good. Glad that, I'm glad that-
Yeah, thank you.
You enjoyed it. So that does bring us to the end of our time together. So thank you to Terry and Dia and Debbie for being guests on The Loving Cup. And, um, I hope that everyone watching and everyone in the audience takes a chance to, um, think about what you're grateful, um, about with someone in your life and then take the chance to actually tell them. So that's your homework. Have a good night.